I'll go ahead and call this workshop to order on a rainy day, Monday, second month, twenty-four, six P. M. Call the order. We're gonna ask for a roll call for my city clerk, please.
Almazan?
Here.
Collins? Reese?
Here.
Wilson?
Here. Uh, can we get the approval of the agenda for the workshop, please?
So move.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Reese. It's been second by Vice Mayor Amazon. Alright, call the roll, please.
Almazan?
Aye.
Reese?
Aye.
Wilson?
Aye. Okay, Mayor Clerk, take it away.
The following items will be considered at our regular meeting. I will have a public hearing relating to fiscal year 2024-2025 budget amendment. Under Presentations, we have a February 2025 Employee Safety Award recipient. We would like to request to add to A special business recognition by Commissioner Collins. Item three, introduction of Empower Health Care Inc. from Dr. Jingga Allesby. Uh, we're requesting to add three A code enforcement staff update by Albert Doddell, our code enforcement manager. Under Consent Agenda Items, we have approval of the following. Item four, City Minutes. Item five, approval of special event permit application submitted by the Black Gold Jubilee Committee of Belgrade Inc. For the Gold Black Gold Jubilee on April eleventh and April twelfth, 2025, at Lomax-Hare Pavilion. Item six, approval of a special event application, permit application submitted by Christ Fellowship Church for Community Outreach Event, February twenty-second, 2025, March twenty-second, 2025, and October eighteenth, 2025. Events will be held at the loading ramp. Item seven, approval of special event permit application submitted by Glaze Festival of Afro-Aarts Committee and Zeta Phi Beta Sorority Inc. For the Glaze Festival of the Afro-Aarts on March eighth, 2025, at Town Square. Item eight, approval of the proposed project funded by Infrastructure SureTax Independent Citizen Oversight Committee on February fifth, 2025, for Tory Island Campground Bath House in the amount of two hundred seven thousand, seven thousand five hundred sixty-five dollars and twenty-three cents. Item nine, award of ITB number zero one dash two zero two five, Tory Island Bath House. Construction to Borami Construction, Inc., in the amount not to exceed nine hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars, and authorization for mayor to execute the contract upon receipt of registered performance and payment bonds. Item ten, approval of Kimley Horn and Associates, Inc., change order number one to project number five under RFQ, number one dash two zero two three, continuing services contract for Tory Island Campground Bath House, relating to the construction engineering services in the amount not to exceed seventeen thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars, and approval of mayor to execute the same. Item eleven, approval to apply for the Palm Beach County's Community Development Block Grant, CDBG program for 2025-2026 code enforcement funds. And we're requesting to add item eleven A ratification of cancellation of current RFP zero three dash two zero two five, rebid number four, a former Gulf Elementary School property development, and authorization for staff to reissue rebid. Under Adoption of Resolutions, we have item twelve, approval of a budget amendment for fiscal year 2024-2025. Item thirteen, resolution accepting a twenty thousand grant, grant from the Han Foundation, Inc., for the charitable educational and cultural purposes of the Lawrence E. Will Museum, and approval of letter of agreement dated February third, 2025, and for other purposes. Item fourteen, resolution approving the Palm Beach County Interlocal Agreement to redetermine, re- re- adopt, and ratify existing distribution formula for six-cent local option fuel tax. Item fifteen, resolution approving project authorization under contract for professional engineering and architectural services for AECom Technical Services, Inc., to provide NPDES services. Item sixteen is an authorization of a agreement between the City of Belgrade and Palm Beach County Constitutional Tax Collectors, pursuant to section one nine seven dot three six three two, print two, Florida statutes, for the reimbursement of necessary administrative costs incurred in the using the uniform method of levy collection and enforcement of non-advalorem assessments relating to nuisance abatement. Item seventeen is, is the same, however, it's with Palm Beach County Property Appraisers, relating to the reimbursement of necessary administrative costs incurred in the using the uniform method of levy collection and enforcement of non-advalorem assessments relating to nuisance abatement. Item eighteen, a resolution accepting and approving the federally funded subaward and grant agreement Hurricane Milton with the State of Florida Division of Emergency Management, authorizing the mayor to execute agreement, designating other city employees to act on behalf of the city to provide a certified copy of this resolution to the State of Florida. We have a first reading of ordinances. Item nineteen, I'll read it in full for the regular meeting. It's relating to ordinance number thirteen dash fourteen to modify the existing Abidjan Estates Plan Unit Development, um, property located approximately eight hundred feet west of State Road eighty, adjacent to Southwest Avenue G. Item twenty, an ordinance, I'll read it in full in the regular meeting, and as an update of our five-year capital improvement schedule, in accordance with section one six three dot three one seven seven, print three of the Florida statutes. And that is all I have for this workshop, sir.
Okay, um, you wanna do the announcements?
In the regular meeting, sir.
Okay, uh, any questions for our city clerk? If not, move on to our city manager. Anything for the good of order for the workshop, Mr. Manager?
No, sir.
Alright, uh, compliance, I hear. Counselor, anything for the good of order?
Yeah, I'm not sure if the clerk mentioned it, but I'll be adding on the agreement with the city manager as you requested at the last meeting.
Good. Alright, PBSO's not here. Any audience comment for the workshop?
No, sir, but we'll also be adding Fire, Palm Beach County Fire Rescue comments, uh, report after PBSO comments.
Ask some questions, that's okay. Thank you so much. Alright, alright, we'll just end up with Commissioner Reese for final comments for the workshop.
Uh, no comments.
Okay. Alright, Vice Mayor, you've been recognized for closing's comment for the workshop.
No comments, no, sir.
Okay. So do I need to buy some time till we have about twenty minutes?
What you gonna offer?
Um, no, so I don't have any, but, uh, I did notice one thing I wanted to-
I, I will mention, now you say comments, we'll get it out the way if I can, if I may.
Go ahead.
Uh, you know, we're going to D. C. and, uh, I think going to twelfth is a legislative here there, and I, hopefully, the manager can set up some meetings with our congressional rep-
Yes.
And through her staff, and maybe who else we need to see for our appropriations that we have up there when we go. Maybe, so we can start working maybe on some appointments for that time that we're up there.
There will.
I think Hill Day is Wednesday, the twelfth. That's the day they want us to go to the Hill. If possible, if it's another day, we just gotta go when we gotta go, when it gives us the time, though.
Okay. So, so, um, Commissioner, since we have three minutes here, I don't like to waste it. Uh, Mr. Manager, um, again, the lighting, uh, with, and throughout the city of Belgrade, are we putting together a plan to address that? Cause it still seem to be dark in a lot of the areas in, in the city. Again, coming through that curve, I don't know what is the issue there, but it's really dark coming around, um, by the bowling alley. We getting a lot of calls about that in, throughout the city. I'm wondering, can we maybe, I know we have Johnny getting stressed out. Wonder if we can, um, maybe-
Regarding that curb, the only way we're going to address that is add more lights, Mr. Mayor.
Well, whatever it takes, cause I'm just, it's dark. I mean, literally dark, and imagine myself my age, and I'm having a difficult time looking, and I can imagine other people having the same issue. And throughout the city, Mr. Manager, we need to look at it throughout the city. Um, really need to look at it.
Well, you, you know, it was only maybe a couple of years ago that FPNL went through the city regarding the lighting and updated the wattage in the light, the lighting, but-
I think it's a matter of some of them may just not working, and if, uh-
The last time that, you know, that this was brought up, Johnny and his people went through the city-
Yeah, I know.
A list of any light that was out.
I don't know, I don't know if there's people that are deliberately making them not operating because of other reasons. I don't know, I don't wanna assume. But, you know, my background is law enforcement, but I'm telling you, we probably need to get a handle on that, um, because it's really dark.
That road is FPO.
Is there any particular area of the city that you feel that that's a, an issue other than the curb?
Well, uh, it's from that, from the curb all the way to seven fifteen light. We have Okeechobee there, all those kids right there that cross the streets early in the morning. That has no light, all the way to, and then all the way down seven fifteen also. Uh, they built the sidewalk, the kids walk towards school, they, they, uh, go to the park, and the lighting is not there on seven fifteen. That, that stretch should be all lighted up, even all the way coming from the curve all the way to the, to the seven, seven fifteen light.
And I, and I know back in the day, and going back in the day, there was a honor, honor system people used where the neighbors would help pay for the, the, the light pole, we would call it, um, pay for the services. But that's not happening now, Mr. Manager, and I just hope that maybe we can come up with a comprehensive plan to really go back and look at it again, see what we could do a little different, okay?
Yes. Yes, sir.
Alright, um, one other thing, um, I guess he's not here to address that. I know you mentioned that you're gonna, um, do some enhancement in front of the city hall. Where are you at with that? Are we still putting the plan of action for that in front of the city hall, the painting and stuff?
And also pressure washing and painting the building.
Okay. Alright, so, um, I guess we'll see you guys-
Let me follow up on that, Mr. Mayor. We have already started that. But Airport Park and the parks and all, we have pulled everybody off, and that's been-
Yes.
One hundred percent. All the personnel's working on that.
Yeah, yeah.
As soon as we get past that, city hall will be next.
So Airport Park, let's talk about that. So I, I know there's a lot of activity. What are we doing? Is it working out now? What are we doing?
I had a little presentation, Mayor and Commission, uh, for the, for the actual meeting. So, as you know, and you received a memo, we got a lot of backlash from the community in regard to Airport Park and its state. So, as ma, as the, Mr. Harold mentioned, um, last week, we began working. We received some quotes for it, so we're gonna be moving forward this week. Once the first day start of the contractor, it should be done within three weeks. Um, we received a lot of backlash in regard to the baseball fields as baseball season is approaching, so we're working on that. We're working on the softball. We're working on the multi-use, um, of the football and soccer field. So we're working on that as well. The guys were out there this morning. We went out there. They're leveling it out, all of that. Johnny's guy's been hauling muck and everything. So I guess at the, at the regular me, meeting, I'll, I'll do another little presentation about it.
And the scoreboards?
And the scoreboards and all of that. So for the scoreboards, we're getting, we're trying to get new scoreboards as well. But, uh, I believe there's a potential sponsor who can sponsor for the scoreboard, so that saves the city some money as well.
But it would be a scoreboard?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
Alright.
So I have no more. Thank you guys so much. Um, we'll see you guys in fifteen minutes. This workshop is adjourned.
Chief Governor.
Your phone number two.
We're gonna go ahead and call this regular meeting to order for Monday, February twenty-fourth, six thirty P. M. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Almasan.
Aye.
Collins.
Aye.
Reese.
Aye.
Wilson.
Aye. We're so blessed to have our own, very own, on the Commission, Dr. Robert Elrich's gonna lead us in the invocation. If you don't mind, please stand in for the invocation. And after invocation, we're gonna ask Commissioner Collins to lead us in the pledge allegiance. Invocation, please.
Heavenly Father, we are truly thankful to you for this beautiful day that you've made, and we truly will rejoice and be glad in it. Father, as we come this evening, we want to continue lift up the power of family and Commissioner Collins and just pray God that you just continue to encourage them, to let them know that joy will come. Father, as we come this evening, we pray your Spirit would truly lead us and guide us in what we are to do in order to make this city a great city. We ask a blessing upon each person that's here and upon this community. And Lord, we just ask and pray that as we speak, that we first hear your voice, that we might do that which brings glory and honor to you. We thank you for our city manager and our staff and all those who gather here this evening. And we ask all this in your precious name and those who love the Lord said.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, for liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Commissioners, and thank you, audience. All right, Madam Clerk.
Yes, sir. We have a couple of items to be added to this agenda. The first one is two A, special business recognition by Commissioner Collins. Three A, code enforcement staff update by Albert Doddell, code enforcement manager. Eleven A, ratification of cancellation of current RFP zero-three dash two-zero-two-five, rebid number four of former Gove Elementary School property development, and authorization for staff to reissue rebid of an add-on of approval of city manager contract under the city attorney's report, and add P. B. Palm Beach County Fire Rescue comments after PBSO comments.
Okay. All right, you heard the amendment to our agenda. What's your pleasure, Commissioners?
So moved.
Motion by Commissioner Reese, then second by Commissioner Collins. All right, call the roll.
Almasan.
Aye.
Collins.
Aye.
Reese.
Aye.
Wilson.
Aye. Again, we welcome everybody to our regular meeting. Do we have any dignitaries by way of elected officials? Because you all VIPs in your own respectable place, and we appreciate that. But any elected official? Not? Let's see. I see y'all there. Dr. Jenga, good to see you. Good to see you. Thank you all again for coming out, and we'll get right into our agenda items. Madam Clerk.
Thank you. At this time, we'll open a public hearing at six thirty-four P. M. relating to fiscal year twenty-twenty-four, twenty-twenty-five budget amendment. If there's anyone from the public that wishes to speak on this item, please rise to be sworn in. There being none, this public hearing is closed at six thirty-four P. M. This time, we have the Commissioner step down from the dials for the following next two presentations. Is Mr. Seals in attendance? May he step forward, please. Our February twenty-twenty-five Employee Safety Award recipient is Mr. Thaddeus Seals within this, working within the Human Resources Department.
Let's give him a hand.
State House, you said you were gonna take this today?
Let me give you opportunities, I can save you, man.
Our next presentation is a special business recognition by Commissioner Collins.
All right. Good evening, everyone. As you all know, last month, we started doing special recognitions around town in reference to our community's small businesses. This would be something, again, that we will be doing every month. However, we have decided we're gonna add residence residential to this platform as well. So in the future, you know, you'll see residents being acknowledged as well. But this certificate reads Certificate of Achievements proudly presented to, I'm not gonna say the name just yet, oh, well, I might as well, Akeem and Andrew Bogley, for your hard work and exceptional enhancements to your establishment, My City Laundry, on one-fifty-six South Main Street in Belgrade, Florida. And as you can see from the picture that is on the screen, even in the rain, this place was still clean. So we want to acknowledge all of our local businesses around town moving forward that are doing an extremely great job with keeping, you know, around the city clean. That way, you know, people that come visit our city would be welcoming to seeing, you know, beautiful things, and our city is clean. Thank you. Mr. Andrew, you may come up.
All right. Congratulations.
You have your family or anybody?
No, my brother was supposed to be here, but he couldn't make it because somebody put a meeting.
Mike Joe, sir.
I just wanna say thank you, everyone. It's been a hard work to make My City what it is right now, and we have a lot more to bring. And thank you, everyone, to welcome us to the community. Thank you.
You may have, take your seats.
Okay.
Our next presentation is from Dr. Jenga. Introduction of Empower Health.
Welcome.
Good evening, Commissioners, Mayor, and City Manager. My name is Dr. Jenga Oglesby-Brim. I am a board-certified nurse practitioner and HIV specialist. Thank you for having me this evening. I sincerely appreciate it. Okay. So for today's presentation, I'm going to tell you about Empower Healthcare, our team, our services, our partners, solutions that we want to bring to the community, and how to connect. This is our board. As many of you may know, Ms. Betty Lawson is our chairwoman, because we are a nonprofit organization, myself, Danisha Warren, who has Victory Nursing here in Belgrade, and our treasurer, Ms. Karen Mann. We are a nonprofit clinic. We wanna be part of the solution. I've been in the Glades for about thirteen years making house calls to another entity and saw the gaps in care. And instead of complaining and saying, oh, this needs to come here, this needs to be done, went home, talked to my husband, and he said, well, what are you gonna do about it? And it was his idea more than twenty years ago for me to start a clinic, and that's why we're here. We feel very blessed and fortunate to be in the Glades. Our commitment to the community is to increase access to quality healthcare regardless to one's ability to pain. Who we are, this is me and my husband, Mashawn, and our social worker, Eris Ellis, who is born and raised in the Glades. We also recently were able to have someone join our team from American Heart. Heart Core has a program similar to Heart Core Vistas, and she's a community health worker who helps us with our initiative to help with increasing awareness to blood pressure screenings, how to take your blood pressure, and why it's important to know your numbers. And her name is Cheyenne, and she is also from the Glades. Our services, we're a primary care clinic. We want to make sure that we are taking care of our patients, both mind, body, and spirit. So we follow a comprehensive, comprehensive, complex care model of care. What does that mean? That's a lot of words. Mind, Body, Spirit. We have a nurse practitioner. We have our medical director, who is a physician. We also have the social worker, because that's the mind part. If something is out of whack, it impacts everything. We are a faith-based organization, although we do welcome everyone who comes in, but it is an important foundation of our entity. We also have, we work with mental health. We don't like to call it mental health. We like to call it mindfulness. We encourage meditation. We encourage prayer. And we do work with nurse practitioners and mental health specialists to, to close that gap in care. We offer our in-clinic visits, house calls, and telehealth. A lot of individuals would say, how you doing telehealth in Glades? All of our patients have access to an app, which is free, and they're able to have visits with me on that app. And we teach everyone who comes in how to use that app, because they can call us, they can text us, and we can do the video visits in that app. And it's free to the patients. Diabetes management. We're not just someone who sits in the clinic and sees patients or go to the home. We want to be the hands and feet of the community. We do a lot of health outreach with an organization called Faith-Based Educators with Healthier Glades, where we go into the churches, we go to the library, whether it's Belgrade, whether it's Pahokee or South Bay in the churches, and we offer free health screenings. How can we just continue to say, this is wrong, you needed to do this, we need to, you need to eat better, you need to do these things, if we're not equipping people with the tools so that they can make well-informed decisions about their health? We offer cardiovascular screenings. What does that mean? We teach people about blood pressure, how to check it, when to check it, what questions to ask, and how to continue to understand and manage their medications. We offer a screening for PAD. Anybody know what PAD is? Okay, good. I'm here to tell you that. Peripheral arterial screening. It looks at how the blood is flowing in the arteries of our body. Most people are terrified when they hear the word diabetes because they know their grandma or grandpa may have gotten their toes amputated or their legs amputated. That is not the story of cardiovascular disease and diabetes anymore, if you don't want it to be. And this tool that we've been able to get a grant from, from Quantum in the community, helps us to go into the community and check circulation without having to poke somebody. We just put a sensor on the finger and on the toe, and it lets us know how the blood is flowing. That way, you're able to take that information back to either our clinic or to your primary care provider or your cardiovascular doctor and talk about those things, being proactive and not reactive. Adult vaccinations, we do offer flu shots. We were offering COVID vaccines. We were one of the few entities out here that the Department of Health was providing that for, women's health. When I came to the Glades, someone pointed out to me that there are very few access to women's health services. So it's been a part of our mission to close those gaps in care. I don't do OB, but I do do GYN, meaning I help women to get access to mammograms, pap smears, and health education. How do we do that? We partner with the Department of Health, and we bring mammogram vans out. We bring quality mammogram vans out, three-D mammogram vans. If someone isn't able to pay for them, we have grants that were able to help women to get the care they need. If they haven't had a cancer screening for cervical cancer, we help that to get done. There are only two entities in the Glades that are able to do that. And I'm proud to say Empower Healthcare is one of them and C. L. Bumbreck. We are able to take care of women and get them the care they need. Numbers are just numbers. Our numbers for cervical invasive malignant cervical cancer in the Glades are high, and this is one of the ways that we come back down. HIV prevention and treatment. Through the grace of God, I was selected, one of the only rural clinics in the country, to be selected by the American Academy of HIV. Thank you. To implement and be a part of a fellowship to teach the community about HIV prevention and rapid start. Before everything went on politically, one of the goals was ending the HIV epidemic, E. H. E. How do we do that? We teach people about preventing HIV, the spread, through PrEP and PEP, whether it's getting them on a treatment that's everyday, a pill or a shot, and in the next year, we'll have a shot that people can get twice a year to prevent HIV. You can get that at your doctor's office. You can get that in Empower Healthcare once it's improved. Also, we, if someone's been sexually assaulted, there is a pill for that so that someone won't be at risk of getting HIV. Most of our community doesn't know that. How many of you knew that here? That there's a pill that you could take if someone's been sexually assaulted so that they won't get HIV? We have access to that at the clinic. Health and wellness. We do offer some urgent care preventative. We wanna be proactive and not reactive. So we're all about teaching, helping people understand, meeting the community where they are. Outreach. Outreach is very important to us. As I said, every year, we host two big health outreach events. And I'm smiling because I love, I started in the Glades making house calls, and the families welcomed me into their homes for many years, and I'm grateful for that. And I still get to see some of the families that I served in. We have our, most recently was our event in February. We are a second place in the, in the country, first place in the state of Florida. In two thousand thirteen, we won the American Heart Business Accelerator Program. So we have a great partnership with American Heart, and on February first, we collaborated to bring healthcare to the community. So American Heart was there. We had the Diabetes Coalition, and we offered free screenings and free health educations. We have physicians come and talk about knowing the numbers and helping to understand cardiovascular disease and how we can reduce our impact and deaths. And the great thing about the team that we had was they were all individuals who have worked either in the Glades or in areas similar to the Glades. Advocacy is very important to me, that I help my patients understand how to advocate for themselves. We are our biggest champions, and what we don't know can hurt us. And so a lot of the times in our clinic, people will sometimes say to me, well, I don't see a bunch of cars lined up. That's not the way we're designed. Empower Health, healthcare is concierge for the everyday person. Okay? So you get the time that you need and that you deserve to go over your healthcare needs. Our patients have at least thirty minutes to an hour if they're a new patient, and we go over everything. Again, mind, body, spirit, because we, if one is off balance, it affects everything. Any questions so far? All right. And so our second event that we have throughout the year is our Women's Health Event. And this is a picture of that event, where we bring women from all over the community, all over the Palm Beach County, really, to emphasize women's health and how we can help take care of ourselves. And those are some of our individuals who are from the Glades. You'll see representatives from Glades. You'll see representatives from Lakeside, from Lauren. You'll see Miss Annie from Healthier Glades, and a lot of people. It's great. You should come. Last year, we hosted a Lunch and Learn, Tea and Conversations about women's health, and it was well-attended. And this was about our Know Your Numbers by Heart event. And this is a way that you can contact us. We do, although we are a nonprofit in that we don't turn anyone away, we do accept insurances, some insurances, but we are a part of the Department of Health's Volunteer Provider Program. That's how we're able to not turn anyone away who needs help. The Department of Health provides us sovereign immunity so that we can take care of everyone. We also, for those who come in, because we're getting a lot of patients in who don't have linkages to care, they've been out of their medicine for five or six months and they can't afford it, we do have a small dispensary that has been approved by the Department of Health in the state of Florida for us to have. So we have blood pressure medicines, antibiotics, some emergency medications as well that we can give patients. And these are some of the insurances that we accept.
Well, thank you, Doc, for, first of all, bringing your expertise here in our community, but more importantly, for caring about this community, the Glades community. That means a lot to us. I'm gonna yield the floor to my colleagues. I'm sure they probably want to say thank you in their own special way. And I know when you talk about mental illness, it's just my colleague to my right gets excited about that. So I'll start with Commissioner Reese. Any comments?
Yeah, no, thank you so very much for bringing those services to our community. Again, it's well-needed, and you're filling a void. We just thank you.
Thank you for having me. And Commissioner Collins, what I didn't mention was we do have our Pearls Program. It's a program to encourage active rewarding lives in older adults. And we implement it by meeting the individuals where they are. We go in the community, either myself, last time we had a mental health nurse practitioner, and we hold group sessions or either individual sessions. And they're really, it's our strategy to help people increase their bag of tricks of surviving and dealing with everyday lives. And we were able to help, I think, in the last year or two, thirty people? And remember, we're only a team of two. And so we were able to help individuals to lower their risk of depression, social isolation, and anxiety. And Ms. Annie with Healthier Glades were one of our sponsors for that, as well as Refuse to Sink, which is an organization out of Cluiston.
Commissioner Collins.
That is awesome. As Mayor Wilson stated, yeah, my antennas went up when you said that, because the more mental health resources that we have here in our community, the better. As you know, working in the field, you know, it's always a need for that, because, you know, we deal with a huge number of mental health clients and residents, et cetera. But thank you so much. I will be making contact with you. Thank you.
And we're also working with the Center for Children Counseling to actually have someone on site who will work with childrens and families. So we're hoping by the end of the year, they were able to get a grant from SAMA to be able to implement, because that was one of the things we said. I've heard that they've wanted to come in the community and help before, but we need programs tailored towards our residents in the Glades, not what you do on the coast. It may not work. And so they've agreed to have someone on site, not only on site, but I've asked them to develop and work with programs in the housing developments as well.
Thank you. Vice Mayor.
Yes, Dr. Jenga, thank you for everything that you do. You do have an understanding for the community, and that's the biggest asset you can relate to other organizations, like you say, because sometimes, you know, they don't understand our community, our people, and what they really need out here. So thank you for your doing. I see the love that you have for our residents throughout the tri-cities. You know, just whatever we can do to continue to support you, whatever, if you need some help from the city, I mean, we gotta support you, because we need people like you in this community. Thank you for what you're doing. Again, thank you so much.
Thank you. I feel blessed to be here. I'm happy every day. I live on the coast, but I feel happy every day that I get to drive over here to serve the community.
Well, we're building homes out here, so you can.
Yes, yes. My daughter's graduating, so I get to move, yes, when she graduates.
Thank you again. You're such a kind person. I know that.
Thank you.
Let's give a big hand. Thank you.
Our next presentation is our Code Enforcement Staff Update from Mr. Albert Daddell, Code Enforcement Manager.
Good evening, and thank you, Mayor, Commissioners, City Manager, for this opportunity to present to you our Code Enforcement Department. Our mission statement, the mission of Code Enforcement is to achieve voluntary compliance by partnering with community members and stakeholders. This approach addresses health, life, and safety concerns to remote public safety, which in turn enhances the overall aesthetic and value of the city. By enforcing city codes, regulations, ordinances, and laws, we strive to improve the quality of life for all our citizens. Our Code Enforcement staff consist of our public, our Director of Planning and Zoning, Mr. Stephen Kramer, myself, Albert Daddell, the manager, and our currently three Code Officers, C.D. Foster, Dee Brockman, Air Seraphin, who is a part-time officer, and we just lost an officer last week. That position is being advertised at this time. I'd like to announce that we have recently begun a seven-day-a-week schedule, where our officers are working ten hours, seven days. We are working from Monday through Sunday. And as we have done that, we have been able to eliminate the peddlers on the street, especially on the weekends around the loading ramp. And there are the schedules. The schedule's from 7:30 to 6:30. Ms. Seraphin works from 7:30 to 4:30. She's part-time. Our main goals are twofold. Our first goal is to obtain voluntary compliance, and our second is to educate the citizens of Belgrade by informing them of the various ordinances adopted by the city, Florida Building Code, as well as Florida State statutes. Our process. The Code Officers are assigned to specific areas of the city called zones. Each Code Officer is proactively responsible for initiating investigations on violations they observe in their zone. Reactively, Code Officers investigate complaints generated by citizens and outside parties. These complaints are generally handled within five working days. Complaints that present a threat to the health and welfare of the community are handled immediately. We follow up investigations and conduct them in a timely manner. We also receive complaints from citizens. These are our reactive, reactive responses to our citizens. These complaints are handled by, received by phone, email, written, and online. I would like to add that we are not allowed to take any anonymous complaints. This is per Statute 162. They have to be identified. This sometimes prevents people from giving us information on violations within the community. Our functions, our daily activity. Our officers are riding throughout the community each and every day, looking for violations, looking for areas in the community that need to be addressed. Illegal dumping, work without permits, and the likes. The one thing I'm proud of with our situation is our officers have discretion. They are not forced to write violations. There are instances where they are able to speak to our citizens and work out a voluntary compliance situation through that. We have been called door hangers to indicate the violation and give them an opportunity prior to getting a written violation to correct those violations. And I'll tell you that that has enhanced our relationship with the community. We were confrontational, from what I'm understanding, but at this point, we're getting a lot of calls from our citizens when they receive these complaints and asking us what can they do to fix them. And I'll tell you that our officers are very friendly, very receptive to these requests. And when possible, we're giving them the opportunity and the time to get those corrections. In some instances, we've had situations where we have citizens who are not able to take care of these violations. On one occasion, we had a young lady who was not able to paint her residence. We put her in touch with the South Florida Water Management, Solid Waste Authority, I'm sorry. They gave her the free paint, and they also came and painted her residence on, not this coming Saturday, but next Saturday. I partnered with a church group to paint a house on Northwest 12th Drive. She also received paint from the Solid Waste Authority, and she's just waiting on us to come in and get that job done. We have, we're doing everything we can to assist our residents in getting compliance to their properties, because it helps all of us. When our city looks good, our property value goes up, our air alarm and all those things are enhanced, and we're doing all that we can to make those things happen. Some of our frequently observed violations are illegal canopies, property maintenance, outside storage, work without permits. And that's one of the things that I'm very proud of. We have been able to save the city a lot of money in the fact that we have identified many properties where there have been work without permits. These individuals are cited. They have to come into the city permitting department, and in many instances, they're charged four times the fee because of their neglect to get a permit prior to the work. This is not something we do all the time, because some people just don't know. In those instances, we give them a break. Those people that we know or that we feel in our hearts knew that they were supposed to get a permit, the four-time fee is assessed. And you see a lot of vacant properties, vacant lots, buildings that are not occupied, the grass is twelve feet high. We use the abatement process through our magistrate to get those properties cleaned up. Our Public Works Department will go out, once we get that order from the magistrate, clean the properties up, assess the property owner, the charges for that cleanup. And if they are not paid, we will request a lien through the clerk of the court. It's recorded, and it's there until it's paid. And these hearings, our magistrate hearings, we have them every month. The first Tuesday of every month at 10:00 a.m. here in the chambers. The only time that hearing does not occur is January and July, for obvious reasons, holidays. There are instances where we may not have a hearing if we get compliance through all the cases that we've written that particular month. And I'd like to tell you that we took over, myself and Mr. Kramer took over in May. And at that time, we had two experienced officers. They subsequently left. Right now, our entire staff has less than six months on the job. Only one of them has gone through the fundamentals training and successfully completed the exam as a certified officer. But I'll tell you that every month, we have at least written fifty-two complaints with those inexperienced officers. And I'm very proud of them, because they are diligently working, I mean, giving it their all to try and make this city a better place for each and every one of us. And we're holding trainings with them on a regular basis. We recently had a training with the clerk of the court, because we had, we have to check liens when we're writing our violations, make sure that those properties are not under lien. And they came in. We had other outside agencies, Pahokee, South Bay, they came in also and enjoyed the training. And at the conclusion of that, we were given certificates, which we could use toward our CEUs. It may not seem like we're making a difference, but in my heart, I believe we are, because I've seen some of the changes in the community. I've seen some of the ways the community is looking better. But I'm here to tell you, it is only beginning. We have just begun, and we will not stop until we get this city in a manner where it's one of the best little places in the South. I want to commend my staff again, because with the limited training they have, I've had no complaints. They come to work regularly, and they're doing all that they can to make sure we're making that difference.
Well, let's give my hand.
Thank you.
Thank you. Before you sit down, Mr. Daddell, I'm sure my colleagues, Mr. Manager, I would tell you, him and I have these conversations every day. And I do, Mr. Daddell, I do see a difference. I really do. I see people out there now, we got a long way to go, but I do see people out there really picking up their own trash, sweeping the sidewalks. That type of activity is taking place now. And we get those calls, we meaning my colleagues, we get those calls. But then that call where people don't want to be in compliance, the first thing they'll say to me, "Well, I was wrong. Yeah, I gotta get it right." And they were so nice to me, so I can't do nothing but get it right. That means a lot to us, that you're just not being dogmatic towards these people. You're trying to make sure they understand that they're not in compliance, but here's the way you can come. That example you gave us, the young, the lady or whoever she was, didn't have the funds to paint her house. You went out beyond the call of duty to find funding so she can get it done. Not only that, to get volunteers to do it for her. You can't act for, y'all give him a hand for that. You can't act for nothing better than that. That's our mission here, not to be hard on people, but we want the city to look good. In three years, we'll be a hundred years young. So the city is old, but we can make it look good. I yield to my Commissioner, Commissioner Reese.
Yeah, we talked earlier about a couple of incidents, and again, we do thank you for the progress that you are making. And the fact that we have a lot of these abandoned buildings that are coming down is really a win for us, and we just want to continue to keep pushing. I do know that some of the issues we have are with our seniors, and many times, they really don't understand. But I think finding ways of working with them, like you did with the young lady, is what's gonna be important for us, to help them come into compliance and continue to try to work with those individuals and find organizations that can work with them. I encourage you to continue to do that.
That's one of the things that I take pride in, the fact that we're trying to work with our communities and let them know that we're not their adversaries, that we are here to help them whenever possible, and that if there's a need that we can fill, just let us know, and we'll take care of that. On many instances, we've had people come in and just, just like you say, Mayor, thank you for giving me an opportunity to get my property straight without taking me to the magistrate and having me to pay a fine for this and that money I don't already have. So.
And I also encourage you, like, if there's someone that we know that we might be able to have some kind of influence with, let us know, so we can also come alongside you to give the support you need to move things forward.
Thank you.
Commissioner Collins.
Yes, I want to commend you, Mr. Daddell, you and your staff, for a job well-done, because that's what it's all about, you know, beautifying our city and taking the necessities to the next step of, you know, trying to help these residents versus what you said earlier, just fining them, because that's what our goal is, to just beautify the city. So thank you again, you and your staff. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Vice Mayor.
Yeah, thank you for everything that you're doing. That's a great approach of what you're doing, you know, working with our residents. We're not here to, you know, put something on, you know, something that we know they can't pay. We're trying to help, you know, residents, and you're not only, we're not only, you're not only helping them, but we're also making, at the same time, you know, getting the city in the right, moving the city in the right direction. And we gotta, and some of it falls on some of these buildings. And we gotta, and then some of it falls on, on some of these buildings, on the, on the, on the owners. You know, a lot of it, you know, some owners do want to get their, you know, houses right and stuff like that. There's a lot of these, you know, old appellated buildings, it's on the owners, it's on us to, you know, we gotta start, you know, putting, making sure these violations get addressed. And if not, we gotta start doing foreclosures or whatever other means, we gotta work around and get creative. Because it's, it's not all on you. Because you can only do so much, you know. You can only condemn a building, but after that, you know, just a perfect example is the, the building that burned down over there, you know. I know we're working and the city is working and the manager and everybody is working, but, you know, every day, people drive by there and they say the city's not doing it, because that's, that's what people say, you know. That's our, it's just mother nature, you know, that's how we are. But we, we know we're working on things like that, and a lot of it falls on the owner. That's not really the city's responsibility, but now it is on us because we hear the complaints from the citizens. So thank you for what you're doing. And a lot of stuff also, we gotta go back to education, our reticence to our young kids, especially with the trash, gotta put it in bags, because, because they, in, in cans, because sometimes, you know, like a day, it's a breezy day, a rain, it gets floated away, now it goes, scatters to the whole neighborhood.
Right.
So, you know, we gotta start educating our kids and our families, you know, we gotta put it in containers, bulk trash and everything, you know, it, it's a teamwork. It's not just on you, it's gotta be everybody, we all need to do our own part. But thank you for your, what you're doing and what your staff is doing. Because, you know, it's an ongoing thing every day.
In relation to our business owners, we are establishing a database where we're having repeat issues with their properties, we're having conversations with them. And in most cases, they are cooperating with us in getting those properties cleaned up. Especially with the, when it comes to property maintenance. If you'll notice, a lot of buildings are being repainted now, and that's because of efforts that we have put forth.
And last but not least, you kept the pain, he often talks about it with the manager. It does help him out, so I'm sure you want to make a comment.
No, I, I just, I see the difference, so I, I really do appreciate. But if there's anything that I can do to assist, just, you, you always call me.
I'm gonna call.
But no, I, I, I have noticed the difference, thank you.
You got any I feel out there with help to Glaze, they got money, you can call them, they help us out.
Well, I have some projects that I will be discussing with the manager in the future.
In the lobby, okay.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much. Let's give Mr. Dadael and Mr. Kramer.
Okay, moving on to consent agenda items, may we have a motion to approve items four through 18?
Motion approved.
Motion by Commissioner Collins is their second.
Second.
Taken by Commissioner Reese, audience comment?
No, sir.
Commissioner comments, call the roll.
Almazan?
Aye.
Collins?
Aye.
Reese?
Aye.
Wilson?
Aye.
We have a first reading of ordinance, an ordinance, item 19, an ordinance of the City Commission of the City of Belgrade, Florida, amending ordinance number 13-14 to modify the existing Abegon Estates planned unit development on property, property located approximately 800 feet west of State Road 80, adjacent to Southwest Avenue G. As more particularly described herein, renaming the existing Abegon Estates planned unit development to Hillsborough Estates planned unit, to, to Hillsborough Estates planned unit, to Hillsborough Estates planned unit development, and removing a 300-seat movie theater, general office building, retail space and daycare center, and adding 77 single-family homes, 28 multifamily residential units, basketball courts, and a community building and, and open space areas, provided for conditions of approval and property development regulations, provided for a conflict severability and an effective date. We have a motion to approve on first reading.
Motion approved.
We have a motion by Commissioner Collins, is there a second?
Second.
Taken by Commissioner Reese, audience comment?
No, sir.
Commissioner comments?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir, you've been recognized, Vice Mayor.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor and Commissioners, I'm in favor of this, of, of this ordinance reading. This housing that the city desperately needs, you know, we're still, and, and, you know, it's just a win-win for this whole community, it's 70 more, 77 more houses out there. I, I don't know who's their partner this time, back then it was Ryan Holmes. I don't know if they're going to continue working with the same builder, but if it is, these are good quality houses at reasonable prices, I think there's, I don't know what's the starting price going to be this time, but I think last time they started at 260, and then it got up to about 330, something like that. But whatever it is, you know, we need the housing, you know, we, and, you know, so this is very important for our community and everything, gives people, you know, back, to bring some of those residents that moved out of here, that don't, they, they actually want to move back to the Glaze. So this, you know, something that I, hopefully we keep supporting and, and moving forward.
Dr. James always says she planning on moving back here. All right, what's, we go ahead and call the roll then.
Almazan?
Aye.
Collins?
Aye.
Reese?
Aye.
Wilson?
Aye.
Item 20 on first reading, an ordinance of the City Commission of the City of Belgrade, Florida, adopting the annual update to the five-year capital improvement schedule in accordance with section 163 dot 3177 print 3, Florida statutes, providing for repeal of ordinances or resolutions in conflict severability and an effective date.
What's your pleasure?
Don't move.
Motion by Vice Mayor, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Reese.
All right, call the roll.
Almazan?
Aye.
Collins?
Aye.
Reese?
Aye.
Wilson?
Aye.
Under announcements, we have our 45th Annual Glaze Festival of Afro Arts on March 8, 2025, from 11:00 a.m. to 7:30 p.m. at Town Square. And our next workshop meeting will be held on March 17, 2025, at 6:00 p.m., followed by a regular meeting at 6:30 here in City Hall Commission Chambers.
Okay.
And that's all I have, sir.
Thank you, Madam Court, thank you so much, good job. Mr. Manager, anything for the good of order?
Yes, sir, Zee would like to have the opportunity just to explain some of the things we're working on regarding our parks.
Sounds like you under the weather, Mr. Max.
I got a bad cold, Mayor, but don't, don't pick on me tonight.
Good evening, Mayor and Commission. I just wanted, we just wanted to bring to your attention a couple of things about Airport Park. That's not the best picture, but as you may be aware, and there's a memo, that's a copy of the memo that we had sent to you about the significant backlash that we received from the, from the community. So those are some of the comments, just a few of the many. People were concerned, and they were just complaining about Airport Park in the state, baseball season is approaching, and we were not moving forward or fast enough. And so, just a couple of comments, but I also want to clarify something. There is a comment, and it circled on there, right next to this little sticky note that I left for you guys, for you all to see. And I'll read it out loud, so I think it's on this slide. It's on this one. And everyone can see as well, it was from, it's resident here from the, from the City of Belgrade. "I met with the city this morning, and fields will be getting done by baseball season. We started hauling in the muck today before we got rained out. I asked them what their vision was, and I can say that things will be majorly improving." Mr., his name is Cameron Carter, he stated a couple of things, when he's, when he meant "we," he meant the city, not him, not, he wasn't the one hauling any muck, any, any, any saw it out there, he wasn't doing anything. There's some clay out there, he, we, we got, that was, the muck was in-house, Johnny and his guys were working on that. And then a contractor brought in the clay. So I just wanted it to be on record, and for clarification, it was just a figurative speech on his behalf. I think he meant well, just to address some of the comments and concerns from the community, he meant well. But when he said that, I guess it came on the wrong way, so I just want to clarify that. I went ahead, some people tagged me, my personal page and my former commissioner page. They tagged the City of Belgrade as well, but I just wrote in there, just gave them a little comment to also tell them that we're addressing the concerns. We understand the frustration of the community that we're working on it. We often, as a small city, we run into budget constraints, so just, thankfully, we've had grants to help us out, and we're working on the park, so we're moving forward. Obviously, as you all know, we always try to get best prices, and that takes time too, you know, get some prices and ask around and everything, so we can get, you know, a lower cost for things. We did inform, so then Mr. Harold and I went out there, Johnny, Peggy, and Diana have been amazing, they've worked with us. We're moving forward, last week they started Johnny's guys hauling in muck, everything, cutting grass, weeds and everything. So we gave the community a little update, and as of this morning, it got 19 shares and 52. So people's commenting, they're sharing it, people's aware that we're working on it. We're moving forward, we have received, so far, three quotes, we're waiting on one more quote to move forward. Hopefully by this week, that should be done, and from the start day, there goes Mr. Harold, from the start day, "We anticipate for the estimated completion date to be three weeks after the contractor's first start date." So if he starts next week, hopefully in the middle of March is what we're looking, we're looking at for all of this to be completed. But those are some of the pictures, we went out there this morning, the guys have already leveled out what's going to be the soccer and football field, the guys cut out the weeds and everything, so all of that looks really, really nice. After everything, you know, completion, all of that, obviously, we're going to pressure wash, we're going clean, we're going to prepare everything. There's a picture of Mr. Good in there, directing them on hauling the muck in, the clay is in, so we're working on it. Obviously, the weather is also weather permitting, right? It rained this morning, they can't advance as fast, but we are moving forward. Are there any questions?
Commissioners, any questions? Okay.
The other improvement that we're talking about, putting in Airport Park, what's the status of those?
The what, I'm sorry?
Walking tracks and the exercising machine?
All of that's coming forward as well, that's with the NE grant, and all of that was put in the NE grant, yes, sir.
Okay.
Yep. But I guess right now, we would, with, a lot of the complaints were the baseball fields, with the baseball season approaching so quick, yeah, and the soccer as well, so, but we're working on the rest of the things, yes, sir.
Okay, good, good.
All right.
Anybody, I know nobody put up, but I want to yield, if you don't mind, anybody in the audience want to address Airport Park? Anybody in the audience?
Comments or concerns?
Thank you, thank you.
Yes, sir.
And also, Mr. Mayor, we're also addressing the scoreboards also.
I'm sorry, what was that?
So addressing the scoreboards.
I'm sorry, yes, Mr. Mayor and Commissioners, we're addressing the scoreboards as well, we're going to put that new, but we're looking at a prom, yes, we're looking at a promising, hopefully a sponsor is the one that's going to get that for us on the city, and that saves the city money as well, so we're looking into that. But yes, yep, yep, yep.
All right, thank you so much. If you don't mind, Commissioners, I want to also yield to the floor real quick. City gentleman in the back, Mr. Manager, I'm going to ask you a staff member, if you don't mind, Ms. Peggy Washington, to introduce Mr. Will. And he's got a big project coming up. And so everybody should know, Mr. Will has really, really been doing a good job promoting artists to come here to perform in our small city of Belgrade. I mean, big names, so y'all give him some love as he come up. Big names. So just a minute, Commissioner and Mr. Manager, you guys just bear with me for a minute. He's got a big event that's coming up, and he need our blessing on it.
So, as Mr. Mayor has said, good evening, everyone, my name is Peggy Boule Washington. I am the Director of Parks and Recreation for the City of Belgrade. This gentleman behind me is Mr. William Likely. He is a very, very intricate part and fabric, part of the fabric of the City of Belgrade, South Bay and Pohokee. There are quite a few signature events that comes through the city. Thousands of people throughout Palm Beach County, Dade County, Monroe, and abroad attend these events. Mr. Likely gives back to our community in various ways, through community basketball games, just different events where he corrals all of our youth to get involved in positive activities. So we've partnered on a couple of things recently. And so this event is also near and dear to Mr. Likely, and I think the community will appreciate having an area where our young people can congregate, have fun, and celebrate during the Easter weekend. We're always trying to find constructive things for our youth to do. Like Captain Payne always says, you know, Ms. Peggy, get them off, get them off our streets and get them doing something constructive. So what better way to do it while having fun and partying and playing some basketball? So I'll yield to Mr. Likely, and he can give more details about the event.
Thank you, Ms. Peggy.
You're welcome.
Good afternoon. Good afternoon. The next event that we have, that we're trying to, that we're working on is Easter weekend, April the 19th, is Saturday. What we're asking and what we are doing is, we're providing a, a free event for the community to come out. It will be DJs, music, but it will be for everybody. Like a diverse crowd, diverse community, so we have international DJs that's, you know, that's ready to go. You know, what we're asking for, the help from the city to help keep this as a safe environment for everybody.
And this, this is like a, not battle of DJs, DJs with different diversities, right?
Yes, different, different, different diversities.
And the location's going to be where?
At Las Palmas.
Las Palmas?
Correct.
Okay, so he wanted to come, and I know he spoke with Captain Payne last week, he wanted to come and get our blessing and, and turn the support to get folks out there, what's the date of that event?
Saturday, April 19th.
Cap, you want to elaborate on it for a second too? You have anything you want to say, you did meet with him.
No, I, Mr. Mayor, I, I did meet, meet with Mr. Likely. And just like always, if there's an event that the city is supporting, the approval never comes from me, I just need to know when, and I'll make sure that we secure everyone out there.
That's the word I'm looking for, security, okay, you got it right.
So no one ever comes to me for approval, it's, it's just.
They come to you for security. So Commissioners, if you guys, you know, I mean, keeping our young folks busy, keeping them occupied, it, it, it means a lot to this community. Mr. Manager, you've always been supportive, and I'm hoping that you'll be supportive as, and not ask for anything from us other than security.
Security.
Because it's a free that, the battle of DJs will come from the Hispanic community, the Haitian community, Jamaican community, the, the white community, the black community. You're going to have a mix of everybody with the DJs, so everybody can feel comfortable to come out and just enjoy some music and, and celebrate, okay? So I yield the floor, any comments, Commissioners?
Then, this is for, thank you for all you bring to our community. Thank you for what you bring to our community, because again, we do need to have those type of activities in order to bring people into the Glaze as part of our tourism, so thank you for that.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Mr. Collins?
Thank you. I just want to say thank you for continuing to keep our community engaged and the children engaged, so that, again, as you already heard, keeping them off the streets, keeping them busy and having something to do, thank you.
Thank you.
And Vice Mayor?
Yeah, I mean, thank you for what the other previous events you've done, and already, I think you had the comedy show and other thing. So thank you for what you're doing, we're here to support you. We're going to work with our longest, Captain Payne, so it's safe, you, without, I mean, you got our blessings from, at least from mine, you got my blessing, so thank you, keep doing what you're doing, giving back to the Glaze, giving back to your hometown, so appreciate it, coming back.
All right, thank you.
All right, Mr. Manager, thank you for your support. Hey, let's give Mr. Will another hand, thank you, sir.
Are we clear on moving forward?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. Share the fly with our man, Peggy, make sure that the city manager get a couple of fly, go out, so they can bless it, okay?
Yes, oh, we will be doing the Afro Arts Basketball Game Tournament on the March 6th. So that'll be Thursday and Friday. And we're encouraging everyone to come out and support the young people, as well as the older people that would be in attendance.
Thank you for not complaining, but you're getting it done, that, that means a lot to us.
Yeah, we just, I mean.
Yes, yes. But make sure, Ms. Washington, make sure Mr. Manager get a couple of fly, okay? Hey, thank you so much. All right. All right, let's move on to, anything else, Mr. Managers, you're good?
Yes, sir.
Okay, City Attorney Counsel?
Yes, as you all directed last meeting, we worked on an agreement with Mr. Harold to convert the interim agreement to a permanent city manager agreement. It's been passed out, it's for 14 months, starting tomorrow until April 30th of next year. Pretty much the same as his interim agreement and previous agreements that he's had, the biggest highlight is there is no severance pay. The biggest, um, uh, highlight is there is no severance pay at all in this agreement. So if the agreement is terminated by either party, there's no severance pay. Uh, Mr. Harrell, if he resigns, is required to give sixty days' notice. If the city wants to end the agreement, you only have to give fifteen days' notice, and his salary would be two hundred and forty thousand dollars, which is less than the two hundred and fifty-six thousand he was making under the previous agreement from a couple of years ago, but a little more than the interim agreement.
Okay, all right, so it's a pleasure, Commissioners.
So move.
Motion by Vice Mayor Amazon, that's second. Second by Commissioner Collins. All right, call the roll, please.
Amazon?
Aye.
Collins?
Aye.
Reese?
Aye.
Wilson?
Aye.
Did you hear me?
Okay, anything else?
I just wanna make sure.
No, sir.
All right, all right, let's go with PBSO, followed by our Chief, uh, EMS.
All right.
Mr. Mayor and the Commissioners on the dice and the City Manager, um, you probably have been aware that there's been an increase in, uh, traffic enforcement, um, because, um, uh, our, our motor units has been, um, they were tied up during the, uh, President, um, visit. So now that they're free, since he's, uh, in DC, uh, we've been, you probably saw a lot of motor units out here. So, um, they are out, um, and, um, they are issuing citations, so, um... So, so, uh, we have increased, uh, our traffic enforcement, but, uh, uh, it's, it's only for those that are, are violating the traffic laws, right? Um, also, everything that you discussed tonight, um, deals with, uh, quality of life issues that, that, uh, we're, um, concerned in law enforcement, and everything that you're doing, um, is just helps, um, decrease our crime rates and, um, give our citizens something to do. Uh, there's also, uh, a quality of life issue that, that, um, we address as well, is, um, some food insecurity, because we know the price of food is going up.
Yes.
Uh, I work in partnership with, um, Restoration Bridge, uh, who, uh, we do a bimonthly food distribution at Hands Park. But what Restoration, what Restoration, Restoration Bridge does is they always call me at a last-minute basis and say, "Hey, I have produce, can you use it in the Glades?" And, uh, there's very few times I say no. So in that case, then I would in turn have to call the City Manager or call Mr. Johnny and say, "Hey, can you help me offload this, um, uh, product and load ramp, and we distribute it," as we did today this morning. I got a late, last-minute call, says, "They have twelve, twelve pallets of produce, can you, can you use it in the Glades?" "Sure." Uh, well, they sent me six pallets today. Um, we had, uh, a bunch of tomatoes, uh, papaya, and, um, something else, uh. But we did offload that, and, uh, we did give the citizens, uh, opportunity. Uh, because they only sent six, that means they're sending six tomorrow, so, so, uh, uh, oftentimes, this is last minute, so I rely on, um, 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 the guardian of the Glades to, to put out something, and, and, um, I've recently added, um, um, Mr. Barry Kerrigan, um, so he will put something out, and that's the quickest way I have to, to notify the citizens that, that these products are there. So, uh, I appreciate, uh, uh, immensely, uh, the support that I get from, uh, Public's Work and, and the city, and, and... But, uh, just so you're not caught off, off-guard, uh, it's always a last-minute, uh, thing for me, so, uh, that's all I have.
You're trying to make, uh, 'cause you called the City Manager the last minute, now he, he understands, we good, we, we know you're doing it for your heart. I think my colleague had a question, though.
The, I know you, you, when are we gonna start enforcing the, the heavy tractor trailers that go through the city and the dump trucks?
So, so I'm not sure if you, if you saw, uh, um...
I know we have, you posted a sign.
Yeah, but, uh, about three weeks ago, we had a digital sign out there, uh, saying that there was no, uh, uh, there was not a, uh, a truck route. So, uh, but that sign was requested from the coast, so it was out there, but they have since taken it back. But when all those motor units was out here, uh, our CMV units was out here, they were enforcing it at that time, and we're still enforcing it. Unfortunately, they're not there twenty-four hours, uh, so we, they come on certain days of the week where we...
I mean, I know it's not all your, not your responsibility, because, um, Saturday, we were in South Bay for the bike, so I biked over there and I came back, coming back to seven fifteen there, the, the, the semis, they're, the notice to, for, for, for this, for the truckers ride is so close to the light, they barely can make it over. I mean, these guys will, you know, cut across from the end, from the outside lane all the way to the turn lane. So that sign coming in from, I'm not saying it's you, that's DOT, but this is something where we need to work with DOT, because the notices are being too late, but some, they have no choice, but they'll go through the light, because they see the sign so late, and then there's traffic, and they can't, you know, cross over to turn down seven fifteen.
I, I believe that the more signage that we have, uh, the, uh, better, uh, it can be seen, but, uh, you're right, those signs are, are not always seen, and those truckers, uh, just don't see them, um, and there need to be more signage, uh, as well as, uh, larger signs. But DOT, uh, uh, regulates the size of the signs, but we need more signage out.
Well, just so the audience will know, it's not their intent to write tickets, but we get a lot of complaints about people speeding, so we cannot put speed bumps everywhere, so we did make an agreement, my colleagues and I, to increase more, um, deputies' awareness out there, monitoring that, so we, we're, we're stronger about that, not just to write tickets, so...
And these violations are over certain mileage, you know, they, they do give us a, a little grace, you know, but, you know, if you're going fifteen, twenty miles over through the city, you know, and I might fall a bit, I got, I got pulled over myself. It's the truth, a while back, I got pulled over myself, and I got a warning, you know, I, I was going fifteen miles over the limit, you know, and it's my, you know, so, you know, there is, it's not like, okay, they're, you know, going one or two miles, like, back in the old days in South Bay, you know, they're just, you know, out here trying to, you know, these are, the violations are, you know, they're serious.
Mr. Mayor, I, I may also add that a lot of times, we, we receive complaints, uh, traffic, uh, speed complaints, uh, and we will order a, uh, a speed, um, speed trailer, which monitors the, uh, uh, the traffic without a deputy being there, and then it gives me, it gives me data after two weeks, and then I could tell you that, yeah, we had a lot of cars speeding to know. And in most instances, uh, uh, people just assume that they're speeding and, and they're really not. Uh, uh, so when, uh, when they make these complaints and they really wanna speed bump, maybe the speed is too fast for them, but it's not illegal.
Yeah, well, I was driving, and the guy was gonna give me a warning, but when I said I knew you, he gave me a ticket for you.
That happens, that happens often, so I suggest you not use me.
Just joking. Uh, Mr. Manager, you may recognize.
Would you give, uh, Mr. Gooden opportunity to speak regarding streetlights?
Oh, me, yes, sir, thank you. Okay, okay. And while he's coming up, Commissioner Reese, I'm gonna ask you, if you don't mind, start looking at a date before we leave tonight for the Noah's and Chicken Ordinance. We have to take that off, but we need to redo it again, if you don't mind looking at a date, so we all can agree on tonight. I know your schedule is tight.
I'm going to hold mine.
Yeah, so, I mean, we can do one in April, I'm gonna be visiting March, too. Find one in April while we going through this, Commissioner Reese. Mr. Gooden, you've been right, and by the way, uh, you did an excellent job at the church. Miss Evans, uh, they recognized you and your staff, and you spoke from your heart. Y'all give him some love, man! I feel, you would've been proud of Johnny. He was so, I mean, he, he did good, go ahead, I'll yield to you.
Thank you, sir. Good afternoon, uh, Mayor and Commissioners, um, the last time this issue came up about lights, we got on the red dent, but our bucket truck went down for inspection. The, uh, electrician went throughout the town, and he did everything that he can do on the bottom part. Now, most of these things are just the sensors or the light bulb need to be changed, and we're working on that dealing, sir. Okay?
The next meeting, you give us a...
Next meeting, they, all are gonna be on.
What about in the curve, going around that curve?
Uh, we gotta work with LPNL on that, they got ad posts for that. That's the LPNL thing, and I did, uh, contact them already, and we're looking into it.
Okay.
All right?
Thank you. Okay, he's looking at the date, uh, anything else for the good of the captain?
No, sir.
Good job.
Well, I think, I, I do have one, one thing before, before the chief gets up. Uh, the, the chief and I are in a fundraiser, Healthy Mothers and Healthy Babies, and we'll be competing, uh, in a basketball free throw...
Oh, wow.
Tomorrow morning, so, uh, she thinks...
You weren't already, 'cause he don't have any.
I figured I'd get the opportunity to talk smack now before she...
Thank you, Mayor.
I think your mic's off.
It, did you ever, did you told him? No? No, well, I never played basketball in my life, so I just...
You should beat him.
I, I'm gonna try my best, I promise you, and if I do, I would never let him leave that one down. Uh, uh, good evening, Mayor Wilson, uh, Vice Mayor, um, Commissioners and City Manager, City Clerk, everybody, good evening. First of all, let me thank you for the opportunity, um, to be included as a standing item on the agenda, and to be able to provide you some updates with the overall, um, operations and progress of the Fire Department. So I do thank you that you make me official. Uh, I was kinda getting jealous of, uh, you know, now all I need is a chair next to him. It's just this humble request. But I do thank you for this opportunity, 'cause it definitely, uh, there's a lot of things that sometimes I wanna tell you and, uh, that you guys wanna tell your citizens, so I do appreciate the opportunity. Um, my focus always remains in ensuring, uh, always, obviously, the high standards in service, the safety and efficiencies of our community. Uh, I give my, Madam Clerk over here, I give you a couple of those. The first one that I gave you guys were the blue, the blue book that you have on your hands. Uh, did you give him the blue book? The, the other one, that one, so that's it, that's gonna be our annual report for the entire, uh, Palm Beach County Fire Rescue, and they actually, um, it's, it's quite amazing the latest work they did. So if you guys, please take a moment to look at it, it is the services that we provide, not only on the cities of Pohokee, South Bay, and Belgrade, in the Glades region, but in the inland, too. So all of those are, are resources that we have available to us. So just because you see us, uh, on South Bay on the same red trucks, you know, the, the rescues and engines, we do have the trauma hogs, we do have the airboats, we do have the rescue, the water operations, we do have so many things that you guys don't see, hazmat operations, um, we have training facilities, we have just an enormous amount of things that we're trying to bring to the community. One of those things that we are working really hard on it right now is, is called a squad. The squad is a small TRT, uh, truck. It's pretty much almost like what we have on the inland, but we're gonna have it here. The only thing is, it's obviously very expensive, uh, it's gonna be equipped with different types of tools that we, a regular engine, an aerial, and a rescue don't have. So it's gonna be really, really helpful for us out here, because like you were talking about, we have a lot of tractor-trailer accidents, we have, there's heavy, heavy damage when we, we attend to one of these calls, um, heavy extrication, sadly. And as you all see, we have, you know, we, if you, if you live here long enough, you have seen one of those wrecks. Uh, on top of that, on this, you can see my picture, by the way, if anybody wants my picture. Don't forget my face, thank you. I had long hair by then, by the way. I'm trying to be serious here. But, Ms. Jenga, you're making me laugh. All right, um, some of the things that I wanna highlight, because I already gave you the other one. The orange one is, um, dedicated just for the City of Belgrade, so you can actually hit, see the highlights of Belgrade, okay? If you have any questions, by the way, don't ask me today. No, I'm just kidding, ask me, go ahead. But almost everything is there, from the calls to the public education services, to our units. So you get a better description of what is our service in the City of Belgrade. And everybody, every city, it's unique, if you know what I mean. So we try to accommodate our trucks, our personnel, uh, most of my, my guys and girls here, they're dive certified to Blackwater. So it, it, it is in- intricate, the, the type of rescues that we do here, they are unique to the type of emergency calls we get sometimes inland. We have the Lake Okichouy, we have the canals, we have the heavy equipment, we have industrial, we have residential, we have commercial. So, uh, our guys and, and girls are pretty much so versatile on what we do. You know, me being here since two thousand and six and moved through the ranks, I'm lucky to have seen a progress, and I'm lucky to, to have seen the same firefighter stay year, over year, over year, even though they travel from long distances. They are committed to this community, I am committed to this community. I spent most of my officer career here, so, um, I'm just excited every time I come to work and see you guys. So in this opportunity you guys gave me, like I said, I, before you guys get my chair, uh, I'm very happy to come here and give you guys reports.
No, thank you. I will say that you guys have a good connectivity with the schools.
Yes, we do.
Whenever we call, and they call you guys, no matter what you guys are doing, you do connect with those kids, and the passion that your, your officers show, that means a lot to us, too. So let's give our chief a big hand, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, uh, one more, one more question, can I answer a question from one of the Commissioners? I can't remember, uh, who asked me, I, I apologize for that. Uh, they wanted to know for the ground funding for the smoke detectors, uh, the carbon monoxide, was it, was it you? Okay, sorry, so may I answer the question real quick? It's only gonna take me twenty minutes, so... So the answer that I have from you, from the grant that we had, the, the smoke detectors and carbon monoxide alarms that we did, uh, we actually partnered, too, by the way, I gotta give in credit to our firefighters, obviously, to the Red Cross and PBSO, 'cause, uh, in community, we work together to able to come in in people's homes and do this. So from May until November, we installed nine hundred and six combination alarms. Thank you, that's, that's, thank you, that's a lot. This benefited six hundred and thirty-two residents living in those homes. Twenty, two hundred and twenty-six homes, we went inside and we installed them by hand. So I do thank everybody who was here, uh, helping, and like I said, PBSO, the American Red Cross, and that community risk reductions. They were here on the weekends, I'm telling you, up and down on those ladders, and the community. And one more thing, um, Madam Clerk, if somebody from the citizens would like to get the link, I gave Madam Clerk the link for our annual report, please share it with the citizens and...
And do say, like, thank you, let's give our chief another big hand, thank you. Okay, thank you, you guys, all right, audience comment?
We have one, Mrs. Annie Iphum.
Ask the lady with the checkbook for healthier Glades. Y'all give her another big hand. Thank you, Ms. Annie.
All right, good evening, Mayor Commission, I just wanted to, um, sh- this is Annie Iphum with Healthier Glades. I just wanted to share with you that this past weekend, we did have our Glades Housing Fair. I know I've come out to all the Commissioners to let them know that we were hosting this, and this was an opportunity for residents who wanted to learn more information about how to go from renting to homeownership. And, um, Mr. Daddell, uh, the information that you shared tonight about, uh, code enforcement, that would be a great opportunity for us to have you present at our next housing fair, which we will be doing, um, next year. So what I'm gonna do is, I'm gonna extend an invitation to you, Mayor Wilson, along with the other mayors of the tri-cities, for us to have a conversation, to see how we can collaborate more, because one of the things we're realizing, what we're trying to do is, we wanna bring education and awareness, but we wanna also create an opportunity, since you're doing all these, um, building these homes now in the Glades, to try to make sure that our residents know about those homes and how to get access to, um, becoming homeowners. So I would love to set up a time for us to t- come together and get the information from, like, the realtors, the contractors, so we can invite them to be at the, um, next housing fair as well.
Can we include the managers in that?
Oh, absolutely, yes, yeah, I follow, I will follow your lead.
Yes, yes, thank you.
Yeah, but I just wanna let you know, it did happen, special thanks to, um, my housing work group, um, Peggy Boulay Washington was part of the committee, along with, um, community partners of South Florida, West Tech was also involved as well. So this was a great collaborative effort, but I think for next year, we wanna make sure that this, all three cities engage, because if we can increase our homeownership here in the Glades, that'll increase our tax revenue, and that'll give us more opportunity to bring more things to our community. Um, the other thing I wanna say with Airport Park, and I will follow up, because there is a grant for community greening to bring trees, and I'm trying to check and see if Airport Park is one of the parks that are gonna be getting trees. I know Duncan Paget is getting trees, and I think Pioneer Park is getting trees, but I will follow up. Alicia, Alicia Pittman, she's the new coordinator for community greening, um, and she probably... Oh, hey, there, how you doing? Yeah, Sienna, I didn't look behind me. Oh, and I do also have Cornisha. Cornisha was also on the housing, um, work, uh, Housing Fair Committee as well, so she's here to support me as well. Thank you, Cornisha.
Cornisha, oh, no.
So, yeah, so this was a, um, this was a really, a, 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 a community-led effort, and a lot of this came from the residents wanting to know more information about this, because of course, you know, we have a large renter community, so, um... So, um, one of the things we talked, we had a debriefing today about the housing fair, and one of the things we wanted to make sure is make sure that this, all three cities are engaged and involved in, um, making sure that we can get the residents to come out and get this information. I definitely wanna invite, uh, Mr. Daddell to talk about the code enforcement.
Thank you, let's give Ms. Annie another big hand. We got Miss Pittman and Miss Chizum, uh, so love is in the air, thank you, guys.
Cornisha, did I miss anything, or am I good? Oh, yeah, and we also did the workshop on heirs property, on how to, uh, and this was one, this was a big workshop that we did on Saturday to work with residents on how to, to understand how to keep their houses in, within the family, and not sell them and all this stuff, so we had that workshop as well.
Good.
I'm good.
Thank you.
I'm good, thank you.
Thank you so much, Ms. Annie. Moving on, we're gonna go into Commissioner's final comments. Uh, we'll start with Commissioner Reese for final comments.
Okay, Annie, uh, I just wanna say to you, thank you, Annie.
Yes, sir, I'm sorry.
I, I just wanna say to you, thank you for, for all you do for this community. Uh, I, I do know that since you got this position, you have really been out there. I think I see you just by the everywhere, and, and you're always pushing for, uh, things for our community, and, and really, I do appreciate it and thank you for all that you do.
Thank you, yeah, and like I said, it's a labor, it's a labor of love for me, and I'm from here, I'm, I'm born and raised in the Glades, so this is home, so I'm getting a chance to give back, so, thank you.
And you're doing an excellent job, so thank you so very much. And to all other citizens, thank you for coming out, Doc, thank you for, for what you're bringing to our community. You know, it's, it's all of us working together that will make this community better, and, and I, I like the positive things that I see taking place with code enforcement. Johnny does an excellent job with his department, and, uh, I, I do know that according, just like with, with, uh, Captain Major Payne said, uh, you know, anytime we, we need something, we can depend on Parks and Rec as well as Public Works to be out there and give support. And, uh, Senator Manager, we thank you for giving your staff the flexibility that is necessary to, to move around and, and make a difference in our community. I know it, it comes from the top, it comes from the top, and, and I think they recognize the fact that you are just as concerned about this community as they are, and you give them the flexibility to do what is necessary to help our community. So again, we wanna thank all of you, uh, staff and Z-Tech, thank you for, for what you do for the city as well, uh, seeing you back in that position again where, uh, you can sort of direct things that's going on, so we appreciate you, and, uh, again, thank you so very much for coming out today, and good to see you, Mr. Kramer, I understand you wasn't feeling too well, but good to see you.
I just wanted to just, um, remind the community that on March 6th, the Office of Community Revitalization will be doing their mandatory meeting for the NEAT grant, so if you have not registered, you need to do so, and this is a great opportunity for residents, if they want to see, uh, get a, it's up to $10,000.
Right.
And they can, um, use it to try to do things around beautification.
Yes.
Within the city and with all the work that you're doing, um, through code enforcement, this may be a great opportunity to collaborate with a resident to work on specific areas within Belgrade. So I just wanna just, it's March 6th, it's the mandatory meeting, and you can go to the Office of Community Revitalization and sign, and sign up.
Thank you. So Commissioner Reese, while she's directing traffic, what the manager's doing?
When, when you're at the top, you just give direction and let them go.
Well, he's good at that, so.
Hey. That, that's what it's all about, having a great staff working for you, and, uh, you just cast a vision, and they move forward in the vision, bro.
Good team, teamwork make dream big. Commissioner Collins, you've been recognized for closing comments.
Yes, um, good evening, everybody. I just wanna thank, um, all of the residents for coming out tonight, I wanna thank each and every department within the city of Belgrade, um, for all of your collaborative effort. I wanna thank, uh, my colleagues here on the days, um, for all of the collaboration that we do, uh, every day in and out of the community, making sure that, you know, this community is well taken care of. Um, I wanna also thank, um, Jessica and her staff, uh, for always, you know, coming through for us, whatever it is that we need done, they get it done in a speedy and timely manner. Um, wanna thank, uh, Mr. Mayor, I mean, excuse me, Mr. City Manager, for all of that he does, and Z, um, for making sure that the dreams of this city come true, thank you so much. I want to also extend, um, a huge thank you to, um, Captain Payne and PBSO, um, organization for everything that, you know, you guys done this past weekend for my husband's brother and our family, um, it truly meant a lot to us. Um, at a later date, we will reach out to you guys, um, but it was truly appreciated. I also wanna thank, um, my colleagues and the city for all of what you guys did and the roles that you played in that. Everybody, I just wanna say, played a major part, and it was truly appreciated. And again, like I said, we will be reaching out at a later date, it's just a lot for us right now, but we will acknowledge everybody at a later date, thank you.
Our, our prayers will continue to be with you and your family, Commissioner. Um, Vice Mayor, you're recognized for final comments.
Yes, I wanna thank all the residents for coming out and being involved with our city and our community here, we really do appreciate it for coming out and just supporting your city, uh, to all our staff, the city manager, but a special thanks goes out to Johnny and his guys, he was honored yesterday.
Yes.
At New Bethel, and I mean, what I said there, and what I'll, I'll repeat it again, they are the heart to our city, they make this city go. Where there's an issue, either in this building or outside this building, Johnny and his guys are there. No matter what it is, it can be a broken tree, to a water line, or whatever it is, he's, they're always there. So I just wanna say, for my part, thank you for what all you do, hopefully you stay here another 30 more years, sir. I have to push you around, I'll push you around. But, uh, thank you again for all your leadership, um, to, uh, Palm Beach County Fire Rescue and PBSO, thank you for watching, taking care of, of all our residents out here, I know y'all always, you know, the guys that come out here is because they love it. You know, they could easily, you know, the ones, you know, they could easily be closer to their house or whatever, but there's something about the Glades that when people come out here, and it's the people, it's the residents, that they stay out here. So I thank y'all for, you know, just doing what, continuing to do what y'all do, um, to Colonel Kennedy and Mr. Brashoff, you know, they give us all the support and all the tools, you know, to help us out, out here, so thank y'all. To all the churches, because, you know, the churches play a big part in our, in our community, it doesn't matter what faith base you are, you're impacting our residents, you're touching them, you're trying to guide them in the right way, uh, especially with our children, so I wanna thank all our churches out here, the First H. and Baptist Church, they're very important here, they're right across the street from the city, not too far. Father Morales, Pastor Morales there, uh, they did a open house a couple of weeks ago, but it's all the Churches Christ Fellowship, it doesn't matter if I don't mention you, it's all the churches, thank y'all for your leadership in being involved with our, to, with our residents and to our, to our young, um, families and everything, please be a little patient with us and our parks, uh, we're coming around, it's going, hopefully you'll see some changes in the next few weeks, so I just ask y'all for a little patience, give us some time and you, you all see the difference, thank you.
Well, again, thank you to all of my colleagues, Mr. Manager and staff, um, it's been a long productive meeting, uh, but I would be remiss, uh, without acknowledging, it's a surprise for everybody, we have one of our young men who grew up in the Glades, Belgrade, went off to college and think it was Maine. I'm gonna let Kerrigan come up, Kerrigan, you have one minute, not two, one minute, one minute to introduce, but here's a young man up in the muck, uh, here.
Good time.
And watch our meetings all the time, he and his fiancee, um, they wanted to come by and say hello, because I think he live in Maine now, but they're right, so we're gonna give you a minute to come up, after your dad introduce you.
Yes, sir. So, uh, Mayor and Dyson, and our awesome city manager and his assistant, this is my third son, he raised in the city, he played in the city baseball league, football league, he know everything about the Glades, he graduated from the Glaze, Glazeday School, and he played with Kevin Taylor, all, all those names, and he chose his own school in Maine. Key West is the farthest city south, Bangor, Maine is the, is the last city north, it's, it's called, his name is.
Ten seconds.
His name is Jay Bars, and his friend there, his partner there is Jamie, I like them shoes.
You like to say hello?
Yes.
Welcome back home for a couple of days.
I'll make this real quick, well, thank y'all for welcoming me back home, um, it's a pleasure to be back in Belgrade, it always feels good to be back in the muck, um, glad to see things are still going good around here, um, and just pray for, um, the city like always. Thank y'all for letting me speak.
Adam, this is your first time, um, Adam, your first time in Belgrade, you wanna say anything? We can just hear your voice, say hello to us. You good? Now give us her love, okay? I'm gonna wrap this up, I do have a couple of quick things, Commissioner and Mr. Manager, uh, I like the ideas and, and I need your thoughts, Commissioners, the departments doing their updates, is that working okay? So, Mr. Manager, you have to decide who's up next. We heard from Park and Rec, we heard from Code Enforcement, and we heard from, um, somebody else, but can you tell us maybe at, uh, in the next two weeks, who will be next?
Yes.
Uh, to give us an update. I wanna say to, um, Dr. Reese, Commissioner Reese, thank you for filling in at the church on Saturday morning, um, myself and, um, Vice Mayor went down to support the city of South Bay with their Bike-A-Thon, and you filled right into the gap, thank you so much, um, bringing the greetings and all. Um, Vice Mayor, thank you for filling in, uh, when Johnny got those accolades, uh, walked in the church, we were late because we had a program going on, but you read there, making it happen. And to Commissioner Collins, I wanna say to you, thank you for being a team player, because we knew you was hurting, you and your husband, um, during the time, but you still made sure that you connect with us and tell you how much you, you loved us, and that meant a lot to us. So thank you for this body, thank you, Mr. Manager, and thank you for the staff, because it's you guys, Z, and your team, the ones that getting this done. Teamwork make dream work, God bless y'all, this means a lot.
I got one question.
Yes, sir.
Somebody was telling me about a tricycle.
Oh, they have a tricycle for the Vice Mayor, believe it or not. Trainer wheels on it. All right, good night, you guys, thank y'all.